Okay, I'm gonna gavel, listen.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm calling the August 13th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education to order per Government Code Section 54950, executor and Education Code Section 35140 is executor at 6:00 PM. No, 5:00 PM.
Hey.
As trustee Youngblood will participate via teleconference, all votes will be taken via roll call. We will now be adjourned to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters: public employee discipline dismissal, suspension, release, leave, assignment, non-relection, non-reappointment, resignation, reinstatement pursuant to government code 54957. Personnel matters: public employee appointments, employment pursuant to government code 54957. Conference with labor negotiators: Dr. Alex Chernus, Superintendent Gary Stein, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services: Dr. Isaiah Gates, Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources. And we'll be discussing CSCA, APLE, and PLUM. We'll have a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9, one case. And we have claims: general liability claim number 641216-SB and 641216-CH, and also general liability claim number 641348. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:03 PM. All right, good evening. We are back from closed session, and I'm gonna reconvene to regular session at 6:03 PM. We have nothing to report out of closed session. And before I do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just like to hand out to our board members, this is from the Orange County School of Computer Science. This is one of their newest creation, their wooden name tags that they made in their innovation lab. So I'm gonna pass these down. I will hold on to Sean's, but here's yours. Very cool. I wish we had the zoom in on the camera, but I don't think we do. But it just says our logo, and then our names, and our, you know, my president on down. So thank you, Orange County School of Computer Science. You've made name tags on top of opening up a new school, so we expect nothing less.
Thank you. We've had these really large ones before that I didn't ever really wanna wear, so this, I like, so appreciate that.
And it matches my outfit tonight, too. And everybody in blue up here. All right, let's get down to business. Pledge of Allegiance, everyone, please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So our inspirational message tonight is gonna be given by Susan Wan Ross. And she's gonna come forward. Susan is a community leader, she's involved with the Chamber, and she's going to explain more about some exciting programs that she's involved with, and how she'd like to partner with the Chamber, and some of these programs will like to partner with our school district.
Good evening. I'm Susan Wan Ross, CEO for the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce and the Executive Director for the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce Foundation. And I just wanna thank you for giving me this opportunity. We have some exciting things that we've been doing with the Chamber. And a year ago, we launched a program called the Future CEO Program. It's a program that is basically an online course. And the Future CEO Program is a cornerstone of our efforts to bolster economic and workforce development by empowering the next generation of entrepreneurs. And it's an online course for K through 12th grade students, introducing essential business principles through a hands-on approach by guiding the students in creating their own business, such as a lemonade or a cookie stand. And the program covers crucial topics such as business fundamentals, marketing, customer service, money management, and safe food handling. Through this initiative, we aim to inspire young minds, equip them with practical skills, and cultivate an entrepreneurial spirit that will contribute to the growth and vitality of our local economy. We've graduated so far 42 students. They've averaged $132 in net income. We make them create a P&amp;L. And next Tuesday at Black Gold, we are giving them a certificate of completion, and we are going to require them to do a little mini presentation. So 11:30 at Black Gold, we have our network lunch, and they are our featured presentation. We believe that the Future CEO Program mimics the goals of our school district and our school board by aiming to prepare students for future success in the real world and the workplace. We are currently taking reservations for Cohort III. It will be launching this fall, and you can go to ylccfoundation.org or to the Yorba Linda Chamber website. Something else that I'm very excited to share with you: we are the first Chamber of Commerce in California to introduce the National Civics B Program. This is a program where the students will learn about civics. Actually, it's a competition. And in partnership with the Civic Trust of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, we are bringing it here to Yorba Linda. The National Civics B will be in Yorba Linda. We are hoping to present it at the Nixon Library, so we're very excited about that. The competition invites middle schoolers in 6th, 7th, and 8th grades from public, private, charter, and home schools to participate in a first-round civic essay competition. A distinguished panel of judges will review the essays, and the top 20 students will be selected to advance to a local in-person event. The local event will feature two rounds of civic questions, followed by a Q&amp;A round, and then providing a platform for students to showcase their civics knowledge. Local winners will receive a minimum of $500 cash for first place and an invitation to compete in the National Civics B California State Finals, which we will also hold at the Nixon Library. And then, the first-place winner of the state finals will earn a trip to Washington DC to compete in the national championship in the fall of 2025, with prizes totaling more than $50,000. We're asking for your support, and we are very excited to say that, being the first chamber in California to host this, we are currently in 28 states, there's 100 chambers of commerce involved in this. So basically, fall/winter this year in '25, it's the essay contest. Then we go to the local B, which will be in person, and that's in February through April. And then the state goes to May through August, and then national goes to fall of 2025. It's fully funded by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, but we do ask for anybody who's interested in potentially sponsoring technology. We have to acquire 20 Wi-Fi-enabled tablets, so the students can actually work off of that, and they have very specific criteria for that. But we are very, very excited to present this to the school district. Everybody who is in 6th, 7th, or 8th grade is welcome to join us. We're hoping that we can get 100 essays, and then from there, we will get to the judging. So thank you so much. We're looking forward to seeing how this goes, and can't wait to see if we have a local student that wins the state finals.
Thank you so much, Susan. That's super exciting news, especially with our Nixon Library. We're, did you wanna explain a little bit to the people about the Nixon Library civics thing we're doing?
Yeah, so the Nixon Library is actually trying to raise $40 million to build an education wing to the library. And so we're partnering with them on developing a civics education course. It'll be on our civics course, where kids will go to the library once a week and meet with docents and learn civics education. So I'm really excited about this innovative program. We've had some great initial meetings with the library, and it's gonna be a tremendous project. And I'll speak to the other Nixon exciting summer project during my report. Thank you.
All right, so when Susan brought this up, I said, oh my goodness, this is like, this is like the perfect time for all of this to come together. So it's just gonna be an exciting year in the area of civics. And so now, I need to make a request to my board members. I would like to move this item up on the agenda, if it's possible. And okay, the rest of you guys, can we move up our student board member item so he can join us at the dais at this time? Everyone's good? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to appoint Luke Gilstrap as the student board member for the first semester of the 2024-25 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, guys, after roll call. I'm in a roll call. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Vote carries five to zero. Dr. Chernus.
Okay, this is exciting. It's my honor to administer the oath of office to our new board member, Luke Gilstrap. He'll serve on our Board of Education during the first semester of the 24-25 school year. So Luke, please join me up at the podium. Okay, so first, let me just share a little bit about Luke. He attended elementary and middle school in Fullerton, where his mom is an elementary school teacher, before coming to PYL for high school, at Eldorado High School. As a senior, Luke serves the Golden Hawks as ASB president. He's got some friends here supporting him, which is, says a little bit about him. In this elected role, he has a long list of important responsibilities, including planning school-wide events and activities exemplifying school spirit, overseeing budgets, and much, much more. In addition to ASB, Luke plays lacrosse and can be found center stage performing in theater outside of school. Following graduation, beginning in the, in fall '24, Luke hopes to continue to follow in his parents' footsteps and attend his alma mater, Cal State Fullerton. That'd be fall '25. Luke has a strong support system behind him, his mom, Christina, dad Jeffrey, and they're both here. Let's give them a hand. Woo! All right. Also, in attendance is Principal Okamoto. There he is. There's our principal. And our athletic director, Mr. Campisano, is here. All right. We're pleased to have Luke. We're happy he's here, and he's agreed. So without further ado, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Luke Gilstrap.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
As a student board member.
As a student board member.
I am committed to.
I am committed to.
Providing a voice for students.
Providing a voice for students.
Including communicating effectively.
Including communicating effectively.
Regarding schools, programs, activities, and student achievement.
Regarding schools, programs, activities, and student achievement.
Furthermore, I will do my best.
Furthermore, I will do my best.
To ensure all representative opinions.
To ensure all representative opinions.
Of the students of the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District.
Of the students of the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District.
Are actively sought, heard, and considered.
Are actively sought, heard, and considered.
As I serve as a student board member to the Board of Education.
As I serve as a student board member to the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you can now have a seat up here.
Can, can we do something a little bit differently, since he has such a support system? Can we get a picture with him and the principal and all his friends that came to support him? I think this, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, you guys are dressed for the occasion, so.
Should they come to the middle?
Yeah. Okay, at this time, let the record show that all board members, including our student board member, are present, with the exception of trustee Youngblood, who is participating via teleconference. Okay, and I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 13th, 2024 Board of Education agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any comments? All those in favor? Yes, I was getting to that, Todd. Our student board member. I, oh no, you can't, because this is, oh, can he? It's this one. Okay, you can. So you should say aye or no.
Aye.
Perfect. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So the motion carries five zero with an aye from our student board member. We will be having public comment tonight. Public comment cards are available on the floor. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. There will be a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time, so we can ensure that we are prepared. We do have a civility policy. Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. And now I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 18th, 2024 board meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frazier, I have a second by Miss, Mrs. Buck. Any comments? All those in favor, roll call, please. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries five zero. And Luke, you didn't vote, because you weren't here in the June meeting, so that's why. Okay, and seeing that this is Luke's first meeting, we are going to, I was gonna like mess with you and say like, do you have your board report? But, seeing that's your first meeting, we are gonna let it slide. However, I do have a question for you. What experience do you hope to gain in serving as the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District Board Member?
Well, first of all, I'm thankful, I'm thankful to be in this position in the first place, and to be able to even like answer the question like that. I think I'm, being able to represent the school district as a student is very important. And what I hope to gain are positive connections with everyone surrounding the school district, and experience that will help me with the rest of my life.
Very good, and we welcome you. We're very glad you're here. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Chernus for his superintendent's report.
Okay, well, it has been a busy summer. And before I get into that, I would like to begin with introducing some of our distinguished new managers that we've added to our team. So first off, I'd like to introduce our new Valdez principal, Mr. William Trong. Come on up, Will, while I, while I speak a few words. Will's worked in PYL since 2010, serving in the last three years as assistant principal at his alma mater, Valencia High School. Before that, he was instructional coach for secondary science, supporting the implementation of the NGSS standards, and was a science teacher at Valencia High School. Will earned his BA in Political Science from UCLA, and his teacher, teaching credential from Cal State Fullerton. He then earned a master's in Administration from Concordia. He'll bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to Valdez. And like I said before, there's nothing better than promoting great employees from within the organization. It only strengthens it. I will note, Will's parents are here, too. So congratulations to you, and congratulations, Will, you've earned it.
Thank you, Dr. Chernus. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, President Blades, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I'm humbled and excited to be board-approved as principal of Valdez Middle School. Valdez Middle School Academy has a rich history, an extremely dedicated and talented staff, and a wonderful school community. It is an honor to join the Eagle family. I'm looking forward to working with our staff and community partners to continue building on the great traditions of Valdez, and to continue to provide a wide range of academic opportunities to ensure our students' success now and in the future. In the upcoming weeks, we'll be working hard in preparation to welcome our students with open arms, to care for every Eagle every day, and to do our best to help them soar this year. Thank you.
Next, I would like to ask Loeann Sarukzat to come up. Loeann is our new principal at Esperanza High School. She's spent over 26 years of experience in secondary education in Garden Grove Unified, serving as volleyball and basketball coach, special education teacher, TOSA, and assistant principal. Throughout her career, she's been a fierce student advocate, and is excited to continue the district's goal of putting kids first. She earned a BA in History from UCSB. Go Gauchos! And her MS in Special Ed from National University. She resides in Yorba Linda with her husband and two daughters, and they're here tonight. And Sarah graduated in '23, and Lauren is an incoming senior, and, at Eldorado. And Loeann served as Eldorado's cheer booster president for four years. So we look forward to seeing the great work you do, leading the Aztec Nation. So congratulations.
Thank you. President Blades, trustees, Dr. Chernus, and Executive Board, I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I am honored to serve as a principal of Esperanza. As Dr. Chernus mentioned, I am here with my husband and two daughters, along with colleagues and friends who have given me endless support and encouragement in this journey. To my family, I know that you have sacrificed in order for me to fulfill my purpose and passion, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that. In English, Esperanza translates to hope. I hope that all students have an equitable education and amazing experience at Esperanza. I hope that they will leave us with a plan and hope for a bright future. I hope every student, from the most marginalized to the most seen, feels safe and welcomed at Esperanza. When working with children, there are so many hopes and unknowns. However, what is known is that I promise to be a fierce advocate and leader, to ensure that we have done right by the students, and to live the motto of every student every day. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce our new principal of Yorba Linda High School, Dr. Bird Potter. For the past three years, Bird has served as Yorba Linda High School Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Student Services. Before her administrative experience, Bird was a dedicated classroom teacher for seven years. She has worked with elementary, middle, and high school students, including extensive experience working with EL kids. Bird earned her BS in Education from Indiana University, specializes in English language learning and reading. She completed her master's in ed leadership from Cal State Fullerton. Bird resides in Irvine with her husband, Matt, and her two cats, Gigi and Big Beef. I love that. We're confident in her ability to lead the Mustangs, including the school's robust CTE programs. Congratulations, Dr. Potter.
Thank you. Good evening, President Blades, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I'm thrilled to be here tonight as the new principal of Yorba Linda High School. As a dedicated member of the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District, I'm committed to creating opportunities for our students. At Yorba Linda High, I look forward to continuing our work to support students and ensure equality education for all. I'm eager to collaborate with the exceptional staff to foster an environment where students can excel in the arts, academics, and athletics. Thank you again for this opportunity.
All right, and last but not least, many of our talented administrators we promote, some we steal, and this is a great example of that. I'd like to introduce our new Director of Student Services, Dr. Baldwin Pedraza. Baldwin has a longstanding commitment to supporting students in Orange County for over 20 years. Throughout his career, Baldwin's held various positions, including ed specialist, special ed program supervisor, assistant principal, principal, and director of student services in Braa Unified. His dedication to a student-centered approach has been a constant, focusing on the holistic development of each child and fostering strong relationships with families. Baldwin earned his bachelor's and master's from Cal State Fullerton, and doctorate in ed leadership from USC. We're eager to see the impact of his work supporting our students. Congratulations, Dr. Pedraza.
Thank you. Good evening, President Blade, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chernus, and Cabinet members. I am both excited and deeply honored to step into the role of Director of Student Services with Placentia Yorba Linda School District. I am grateful for the trust you have placed in me, and I look forward to contributing to the continued success of our students and school community. Thank you very much.
Okay, can we get all of our people we brought to the podium up here for a picture? Because we'd like to celebrate you guys as well.
Okay. I will continue here. As I mentioned, it's been an amazing summer. A lot of times, for school districts, while kids are off is when we do a lot of our very important work, and this summer was no exception. I want to talk about where we're going as a school district, and one of the key indicators. When I became CFO of the county office, I oversaw 80 school districts' budgets. And one of my jobs was to make sure that I monitored, I had to approve 80 school district budgets, $14 billion of oversight. And one of our districts was declining every year, and so they came to, they submitted their budget to me, I was probably a year on the job, and, and they didn't have enough money, and they submitted a petition for a $40 million loan from my office to keep the doors open, and I couldn't approve that. So we had to put them into bankruptcy, and I had to write a bill for the governor to sign within three months to give them a state loan. The board was disbanded, the superintendent was removed, and to this day, that district's still in what's called state receivership, where there's a state receiver there. And what happened in that district was they were declining every year, hundreds and hundreds of kids. And so what happened was, when you decline, the first thing that happens is you have to cut programs, because you have less kids. Then you have to cut employees, and people lose their jobs, and then you have to close schools. And what happened in this district was, as they closed more and more schools, charter schools started coming in and taking over those schools, and it just accelerated the issue. Over half of school districts in California are declining. That means every year, districts are having to cut positions, cut teachers, cut programs, close schools. And when I came here to this district, I noticed a disturbing trend that was leading our district right down that road. In 2018-19, PYL had 25,477 students. The next year, 25,100. The next year, 24,200, dropped 900. Until 22-23, 23,100. So, over the last, since 1819 to today, we are operating with about $30 million less dollars a year than we had. Over 2,000 less kids. And what happened after COVID is, a lot of kids didn't come back. They found alternative ways to educate. And what parents learned was, they have an option on where they go for schooling. They can stay at home and do schooling, they can go to charter schools and do schooling, they don't have to come to their home district. And so in order for us as a school district to attract and retain families, we need to make them want to come. And the only way to do that is to capture the kids we have by building from within, building preschools, and by creative innovative programs throughout our district, so families will want to come here. And so that's been our goal all along. So why do we innovate? Why do we create a computer science school? Why do we create a pathway through our independent study program called USI? Why are we creating a computer science curriculum right now? Why are we building these preschools? Because our teachers want jobs, our teachers want raises, our parents want programs, nobody wants to close schools. So that has been my charge since I got here. And tonight, what I want to share with you is some very promising data to support what we're doing is actually working. And so... I'm going to pull up something really quickly here. This is going to be our enrollment, and I'm just going to share with you a snapshot. In 2023, from January 1st until today, August 13th, we enrolled 1,453 new students. That's pretty good. In 2024, this January 1st until today, August 13th, 2024, we've enrolled 2,286 new students. That's 800 more kids this year than last year at this time. Our total enrollment, September 1st of '23, that means last year, September, when we opened school, our total enrollment was 22,763. And when we ended the year, we ended the year with 22,576. We budgeted for our budget for this coming year, we budgeted about 22,300. We budgeted 22,300. Why? Because every year, we lose 400 kids, so we budgeted, again, we're going to lose 400 kids, so we budgeted 22,300. Today, with two weeks still to register and enroll, and we get a lot of kids between now and the start of the year, we're at 22,649. We are 350 kids over what we budgeted for, and that is approximately $5 million in new money our district will receive this year. So, everybody should clap to that. People want to come to our district. And it's just very exciting to announce that today. Hopefully, it's not a bubble, hopefully, it's not like a one-time thing, and it's a pattern that continues, but what we do know is, families are coming back, and this is, it's just great news. So, with that, I want to get into some summer announcements. First off, I want to thank Human Resources for hiring all these new teachers. We had, as I mentioned, all these kids are coming in, we're opening new TKs, so we've been working very hard, hundreds and hundreds of applicants that we've hired over the year. So that's very exciting. Also, we've had over 5,500 kids in our summer programs. We've had our enrichment camps, our extended year camps, our sports camps. So, I want to thank Dr. George Lopez and his team, and Dr. Olivia Young for all your work this summer, in addition to Renee Gray serving all of our special needs kids this summer. So, like I said, a lot of kids are off for summer, a lot of families are off for summer, but we've been running a lot of programs, supporting a lot of kids whose parents are working, and they come to us to get great programs, and we've been able to do that. We've done quite a bit of summer projects. We installed over 50,000 square feet of flooring at six of our sites. We've done a lot of fiber wood chips on our playground, 76 playgrounds. We completed over 600 work orders. We replaced 12, 15-ton HVAC units. We've done roofing, we've done field renovations, 12 of our sports fields. We trimmed 370 trees, that's pretty good. We've done a lot of painting, repairs, the big HVAC projects at our high school gyms are being completed. We did NPR improvements at Tufts, we did tennis court resurfacing at all of our high schools. Later on today, you'll have opportunity to vote on designs for two new beach volleyball courts at Valencia and Esperanza, not to mention all the deep cleanings. So, a lot of stuff's gotten done. We also got a grant, we got over $1 million from the state for our new preschool program. So, again, something we can be really proud of, we love free money, yes. Really looking forward, we have a State of the District event, so that's going to come up. All the funds raised go to the Reach Foundation. And so, that'll be Tuesday, September 17th at 6:00 PM. Hopefully, you can join us. If you're unable to, we're going to livestream it on YouTube, so we really want everyone to either be able to come, or if you're not able to, to be able to watch it from home. And it's just a great way, all the funds will go to supporting arts, academics, and athletics at our schools. Finally, once again, I'm going to be doing the Superintendent Advisory Committee, so we encourage you to apply. We'd love you to be on our advisory committees, we have several committees, we have a high school parent committee, a middle school parent committee, elementary parent committee, special education parent committee, and it's a good way just to get involved and hear from me and staff on what's going on in our schools. And with that, two more weeks of school, students, so enjoy the last few days of summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Churnus. When those enrollment numbers came up, I wanted Dr. Gates to start saying, "Let's all do the wave now, let's all do the wave." All right, back to... Was it in the back of your head? Yeah. So at our leadership symposium, one of the things that Dr. Gates always does is he leads all of the, like our admin leadership and whatever, in the wave while we're waiting to do the picture. And so he's got this really cool beat that he does, it ends up being a competition, and so it's just really fun times, we just had this, and so that's, that was his deal. And so, when those numbers came up, that started rolling through my head. Okay, so moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. Tonight, we have 12 people wishing to speak, so each speaker will have two minutes. When you come to the podium, I'm going to ask that you repeat your name, just so we know for our records, and I'm going to call the first four speakers up. First speaker will be Leslie Alexander, second will be Billy Smith, our third speaker will be Paula Powers, and our fourth speaker will be Nellie Raphael. Leslie? Thank you.
My name is Leslie Alexander. I'm a newly retired teacher from Yorba Linda Middle School and a homeowner in Area 1. I'm here to share my personal experience from this past school year, my last year of teaching. In March of this year, YLMs teachers and staff prepared posters with positive messages as a surprise and a unified show of support for our talented and beloved assistant principal, Paul Kim, who had just been forced to resign by this administration. The posters were placed in our car windows and cars were parked on the public streets in front of YLMs. That same day, Dr. Gates came to YLMs and was seen meeting with Mr. Kim in his office. Later that day, we learned that this administration was holding Mr. Kim personally responsible for our posters, and if we did not stop displaying the posters in our cars, Mr. Kim could receive consequences, including having the option of the forced resignation revoked. In all of my years in education, I have never experienced anything like this. A district administrator going out to a school site, to our workplace, in order to intimidate, create fear, and make threats. This practice is deeply troubling and unacceptable in the workplace. YLMs is not alone. A practice of intimidation, fear, and retaliation by this administration targeting teachers and staff is occurring at schools all across our district. Our teachers, staff, and students deserve better. They need you to do better.
Billy Smith. On July 7th, 2020, the PYLUSD School Board unanimously passed Resolution 20/04 condemning racism, which included these three key actions. One, celebrating Black History Month and promoting understanding of the contributions of Black people. Two, creating task forces to address diversity, community needs, and advance professional development on all racial issues. Three, establishing an ethnic studies course in high schools. To the board's credit, these actions were quickly implemented. However, four years later, they have been systematically dismantled by the extremist majority on the current board. Board Member Blades has opposed Black History Month celebrations, creating an environment where teachers feel unsafe discussing diversity. The Equity and Inclusion Task Force has been disbanded, driving away the very leader committed to these goals, in spite of his being a consensus, I hate that word, consensus, you know what I mean, living in our district and the parent of two students in our schools. And now, to top it off, the multicultural studies elective is canceled at all of our high schools for this coming year. Are you bound by your own resolutions or not? If you are, reinstate these measures immediately, or rescind the resolution. Your actions speak volumes about your stance on racism. Show us whether you try to start... I'll see you again.
Paula Powers. I'd like to welcome back our teachers and thank them for all they do. Our sons and daughters start each year with a wide range of emotions. Through it all, you teachers work magic. You inspire, engage, nurture, and connect to our kids. My husband and I can't thank you enough for your partnership throughout the years. Speaking of great partnerships, I'd like to recognize our teacher's biggest supporter, Linda Mannion. Mrs. Mannion, the president of the Association of Placentia Linda Educators, has been putting our kids first for decades by being a positive voice for their teachers, but more importantly, a stalwart advocate for our students. Her knowledge and expertise is invaluable, and we're fortunate to have her at the helm. Linda Mannion's partnership has made our local teachers' union so strong that 93% of PYL educators are members. It's important that our teachers are respected enough to have a seat at the decision-making table, since they know best how to implement management's ideas. I'm asking that the divisive and damaging language used to denigrate our hard-working teachers stop. The sowing of distrust hurts our district, which is not helpful as we spend thousands of dollars to advertise to students outside our boundaries and try to boost registrations in our exceptional schools. Parents want all stakeholders to be invested and respected. There is no "I" in team. Success is not selfish. The more people we have rowing in the same direction makes difficult work manageable. Each of us has value and deserves a voice. Through collaborative partnerships, our teachers, parents, and most importantly, our kids thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Nellie Raphael?
As election season ramps up, our board majorities' opponents and their groups have already begun employing underhanded tactics. I recently filed a complaint with the FPPC against Misty Johnson for repeated campaign violations. While the district's attorney acknowledged an error in the initial complaint code, they affirmed that Ed Code 7054 violation had indeed occurred, and a valid season desist order was issued. In retaliation, Misty decided to publicly share the FPPC letter I received with my name prominently displayed on social media. This led to harassment and doxing from individuals that are associated with Misty, who cowardly hide behind an anonymous name. I want to remind the opposition that California's Doxing Law, Penal Code Section 653.2 prohibits the publication of personal information without consent with the intent to identify someone. Doxing is a serious offense with severe repercussions for the victim's safety, privacy, and well-being. Moving forward, any repeat incidents will result in legal action against the individuals or groups involved. It is essential for our community to uphold integrity and avoid deceitful tactics used by our opponents. Stereotyping individuals based on their Christian beliefs or political affiliations is unacceptable. The exploitation of children, such as sharing photos of minors who are staff and district employees in online discussions, has been done recently, is completely unjustified. Additionally, revealing my place of employment for public scrutiny is a reprehensible act. Are these the standards of dignity and civility they expect from community members? Let us exhibit maturity and behave as responsible adults, understanding that our actions influence how our children perceive interactions with others. Setting a positive example is paramount. I'd also like to add, since when is it acceptable to attack individuals based on their political beliefs? The opposition consistently labels conservatives in our community as far-right extremists.
Thank you. The next four, Gloria Johnson, Linda Mannion, Kathy Satchel, and Lynda Cohn.
Yes. All right, thank you. Hello, Gloria Johnson, sixth grade teacher. As we prepare for the start of the new school year, I want to share some of my reflections as I drove home from the new teacher orientation, because that's where I do my best thinking as well. I'm proud to say, this school year will mark my 32nd year in education, all here in PYL. That means over 900 students have been in my classrooms across two school sites. And that's why our institutional history and knowledge matters so much to me and to countless others in the district and in the community. And even though we welcomed 93 new teachers yesterday, and a core group of our veteran teachers have 15 years of experience or fewer, it's because of who we were and what we did that made PYL the place to be. Veterans like me and the trailblazers before me laid the foundation of greatness that has defined us. Of course, we welcome the new energy and innovation of the new teachers who honor our traditions and will build upon them. As I've shared before, this is not an easy profession, but it's a labor of love. Yesterday, Linda spoke about the lifelong impact of a good teacher, Dr. Gates spoke about us using our superhero powers for good. And teachers answer this call because we understand the assignment to work with our families, to help our students reach their goals, to fulfill their dreams, and to be the best versions of themselves. So, I'm proud to be an old-timer now. I'm compelled to continue the noble work with my PYL brothers and sisters to help maintain our excellence and to reestablish our reputation as a destination district, because when we organize, when we collaborate, and when we're truly unified across all levels, outstanding things happen. So, I look forward to a joyous school year with renewed focus and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Linda Mannion, the president of the Association of Positional Educators. As we near the beginning of a new school year, I wanted to take this time to talk about the magic of the classroom. Only a teacher and their students can know how special that is. It is a place of learning, passion, joy, and exploration into everything that is possible. It is a time where friends are made, challenges are overcome, and dreams are discovered. It is a magic place that brings joy to both the students and their teachers. But there are several national studies and surveys that show many teachers are feeling demoralized and even quitting their jobs in large numbers. All of this is unfortunately true. What we should not do, however, is blame teachers for this growing problem. Teachers have often been falsely accused of doing many things which common sense would tell us is just a sad falsehood and really just strange. Teachers are the very definition of love and care that nourishes the minds and well-being of their students and their communities. We all know this because for whatever strange thing is said, we know it does not apply to our former teacher or our children's teachers. In fact, instead of anything negative, we can all think of those teachers in moments that helped shape and define our lives. That has always been the meaning and memory of a teacher in our life. At this time of year, let us embrace the magic of the classroom and let the teachers and students enjoy this very special time. I wish all the students, teachers, and parents the very best school year.
Thank you, Linda. Kathy?
I'm Kathy Satchel. I'm a 49-year resident of Yorba Linda. And I first want to say I was very impressed with the superintendent's messages this evening. And I see some good things happening in the district. I have worked in two districts. I've worked in this district, and I've worked in East Whittier District. Unfortunately, there's a lot of very bad things happening in our country and in our schools, and it makes my heart hurt very badly. One of the problems is our teachers' union. I feel the teachers' unions are not benefiting the children. And the reason is, there are still some poor teachers that are being -- that the union is saying that they are not poor teachers, but they are, because I've worked with them. In my other school district, I had a wonderful principal for 20 years. Thank goodness I did. Anyways, there was a teacher who was drinking at school, and the principal had everything -- it took her one year to get rid of that teacher. This should not happen. These types of things should not happen. These kids deserve better than this. So I'm saying that we need to look, maybe get rid of tenure. And also, as far as the dues for teachers, I don't feel they should go to support people running for the school board either. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Lynda Cohn.
When I say teachers' good, unions problematic, I've got to acknowledge that there are some teachers who say, "If you attack the union, you're attacking me." But I claim that our union has moved so far beyond wages hours and working conditions that we've got to address some of the issues that are causing me concern. Nowhere is this problem more apparent in two laws that involve CTA. And I'm talking about AB 2222 and AB 1955. AB 2222 would have trained teachers in high-quality, widely-recognized science of reading emphasizing phonics. CTA blocked this bill from even being heard, discussed, and amended if necessary. Only 43% of California 3rd graders read at grade level, and minority students are scoring even less. Mississippi adopted the science of reading approach when they ranked 49th in the nation. Mississippi now ranks 21st. What is more basic than the ability to read? And why would CTA not even permit discussion on this issue in the California Legislature? Now consider AB 1955 a bill that CTA fully supported. 1955 allows schools not to notify parents in certain situations, but there's something about this bill that is infinitely far worse. 1955 protects any teacher-staff member who supports, encourages, affirms a child considering transitioning. That staff member may not be disciplined. You say, "Well, that's not happening here." Well, it has happened here under a previous administration, and the administration apparently did nothing. We have a choice to make on November 5th.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Brent D., D. Lawrence Rattler, Heather Brown, and Maria.
My name's Brent. I did K through 12 in this district, as did my children. Listening today to the criticism of the board because of canceling of the multicultural studies classes is just completely disingenuous. The obvious reason for that is kids aren't interested, not enough kids signed up. And so we need to talk about that in a truthful way. And the same thing happened in the Harbor District. So that's why. We at least got to live in reality about that type of thing. Thank you.
I've spoken to this board before about trust. My grandfather used to say, "Never trust someone who lets you down more than twice. Once was a warning, twice a lesson, third time was taking advantage." Following the April board meeting, our superintendent, where he stated, "My door is always open." I approached him and asked if we could talk. I was told, "Sure, just send me an email." Despite skeptics who told me that meeting would never take place, I trusted him. So I sent him that email. Getting no response, I sent a second, and then a third. Finally, he responded by stating that he couldn't possibly meet with me until after graduation. That was two months ago. I'm still waiting. Warning. At the May 7th board meeting, the superintendent approached me regarding my conversations with the Department of State Architects. He insisted that he had a letter from the DSA indicating that the USI project was exempt. I shared with him that I was told the DSA had not issued such a letter, but he stated he would forward me a copy of that letter. I'm still waiting for that correspondence. It turns out, based on a public records request by a member of the community, that such a letter never existed. No, a copy of DSA publication IRA 22 does not amount to an exception letter. Excuse me. Lesson. Finally, we have heard the protestations that the USI was not even subject to review for various and ever-changing reasons. Our superintendent even went so far as accusing the wrong board member of reaching out to the DSA, calling her actions "unconscionable", and further calling for a select group of community members to "make everyone they know aware of her actions." As we now all know, the USI did in fact need DSA approval, and since their involvement, they have noted several safety concerns and accessibility issues that would have gone unaddressed if someone had not undertaken such an unconscionable action. Taking advantage.
Thank you. Heather Brown?
I've been hearing a lot of talk on social media and in public comments in these meetings about wanting to return to the good-old days of the district. And I'm baffled as to when exactly that was. Was it when certain admin and some teachers, who are no longer here, by the way, chose to turn a blind eye toward bullying, even though it was repeatedly brought up to them? Were the good-old days under former Superintendent Elsasser, when the district secretly rolled out the spy software class-wise, and parents weren't notified that every window on their child's screen was visible and could be closed, even if they were using their own computers and not district-designed Chromebooks? Were the good-old days when PYLUSD was losing hundreds of students year after year? Or no, wait. Maybe the good-old days was when Aldo Teams and Band couldn't practice because they didn't have field lights for decade after decade? Were they when these public board meetings weren't being recorded and catalogued for the public to view at home? Or were they all the years that middle-school sports weren't occurring? Thank you, President Blades, for bringing those items up time and again until they were finally accomplished. I've attended and sometimes spoke at these meetings for years now, and I think that the fresh, creative, and innovative things that are being implemented in this district to not only keep our current students, but also to attract new students is pretty exciting. I'm not looking in the past, but I know I'm not alone when I say, "I'm excited about the future and the bright days to come in PYLUSD." Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Maria?
Good evening, everyone. President Blades, trustees, executive cabinet, Dr. Churness. My name is Maria Lupita Stubbs. And I trust you all had a wonderful summer break. I sure did. In regards to actually the summer enrichment program, you were talking about that earlier, Dr. Churness, offered this past June and July. And as you might have heard, the kids had a lot of fun. My child was one of those. She benefited. She actually went to Rio Vista. She loved it, made a lot of friends, learned a lot. And also, I want to highlight that this summer was the first time that DLA enrichment was offered. Okay, so this was summer enrichment for DLA kids who are struggling with their Spanish. So targeted summer enrichment. It was awesome, and I want to thank you for that. So this way, the kids keep practicing their Spanish during the long break. If anything, just some feedback. I did hear from a family that they actually wore the program at all. So maybe perhaps for next year, just a little bit more promotion, maybe ahead of time. I've also heard from parents about their students being so excited about the USI. And as I mentioned in previous board meetings, this is for kids who can't afford any kind of training, and they wish for it, and they dream of it, and they've been affected by COVID and the lockdowns. And so these kids wish to attend USI and become athletes, as well as kids who want to reach new heights. And lastly, as the new school year begins in two weeks, I'd like to respectfully request, and I guess I want to say demand, a refresher to all admin and staff as it pertains to our parental notification policy so that it is properly followed and abided by. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our consent calendar. Consent as actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. Trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any items tonight that need to be pulled?
I have some, please. Okay, so.
One second, one second. Sean, are you still on? No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Let's pull the items, and we'll take five minutes while I try to reconnect with him.
Okay. My list is 18.9, 18.10, and 11 together. But we can do that when we get there. 18.16, 19.1, 19.2, 21.7, and 21.12.
Okay, I'd like to pull 18.2, 18.3, 18.8, 18.15, 19.6, 19.17, and 21.13.
I didn't have any of those names. None for me as well. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll try to see if we can reconnect with Sean. All right, we're gabbling back in. So Sean is on an emergency, so he's not at the fire station right now, and he's asked if we can try to give him a few more minutes. And so what we've decided that we're going to do is we're going to go to the unanimous consent calendar items.
Is he on?
Sean's on? Oh.
There you go.
I guess we stalled enough. All right. So we're going to proceed as normal. Okay.
Vote on everything else?
We'll vote on everything else.
Sean, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Okay.
Okay, let's just do the vote real quick.
I got you. I'm there.
Okay. Let's do the vote on all the unanimous items. I need a motion for the consent items that have not been pulled.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar excluding all the items that have been pulled.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, and I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor? A roll call vote, please. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Luke? And I am an aye. Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. Okay, 18.2. Oh my gosh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant listings in the following amounts. Check number 264946 through 266414. Current year expenditures, June 9th, 2024 through August 3rd, 2024, for the amount of $27,343,719.77, and payroll registries, 11B, 12A, 12B, 1A, Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, and I have a second by Mrs. Buck.
Okay. I pulled this because there's nine warrants listed on here for Garner-Holt Education Through Innovation. And the total of these warrants equal $376,548.18 for Garner and Holt. The board has only taken action once on this, on August, April 16th, in the amount of $154,000. And at the time of the April meeting, I brought to attention to the board that this was for design purposes only. There has been no further board agenda items for Garner and Holt anywhere to be found. I did a public records request asking for this and reviewing the PO and warrant listings I put together that the district has given this company over $1.1 million, and the board has taken no action to approve these warrants or POs. Also of note, the district spent $490,000 on expenses to Garner and Holt before the board meeting on April 16th. And these payments were made between March 6th and April 6th, 2024. The board has took no action, and it never approved these expenditures, let alone the budget this money came from. So I'm just, I'm curious why these are ending up on our payroll without this coming to the board.
So all the purchases for Garner-Holt were paid through POs. We checked with the county, sorry, county legal counsel in order to determine how we should make these purchases. And so what you have are, you had planning, right? That was the board item that was there. And then we also, you've got curriculum and instruction, which is something that we can, it's a purchase that was made through a purchase order that was provided to the board. I don't know the exact month that that was done, because this has been over the last few months. But all of the POs and the purchase orders and the checks that are made out were brought to the board.
Okay, I did a public records request, and I asked for that. And the only thing that I got was the April 16th meeting. So there's $490,000 before even the April 16th meeting, and I asked for that, and there's nothing there. So I'm just wondering when we approve these things, because I can't find it anywhere. And I've asked for this information. I did a public records request for it. There's no substantiation of those being approved by the board before this.
So all purchase orders do come to the board in the listings. And so they're there. And so when you do a Public Records Act request, typically, things that are publicly available aren't included in there because they're already available online.
When you're asking for a specific through Garner and Holt?
Well, it should have been disclosed that it's available online to you and what date it was there. So I apologize to that if that didn't happen.
We'll be sure to make sure you have that information, but it was disclosed to the board and approved.
Okay, because I'd like to know. Okay, because I'd like to know when. I have searched every board agenda since this year looking for it, and I can't find it anywhere. So I'm not going to approve this payment because I feel like we haven't gone through the proper channels. And I feel like, and I don't even know what budget these are coming out of. I mean, I can guess, but I don't, I don't have the proper information to make an informed decision.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Buck?
No.
Mrs. Anderson? Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries three zero. And I'm actually going to go, just in case we...
Three two.
Three two, sorry, three two.
Excuse me. No calling now, or you'll be asked to leave.
And so we're going to move to twenty-one point one three because this has to do with our personnel, and so we want to make sure we have personnel hired and ready to go.
Is the student board member going to get a vote?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Luke.
I abstain.
Okay. Great call, Luke. Okay, we're going to move to twenty-one point one three, personnel. Who polled twenty-one point three?
Oh, one three. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, I need a motion.
I know. I'm just catching up. We've switched a lot of pages. I'll make a motion, let's see, to approve the classified human resources report. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson. I have a second by Mrs. Buck.
Okay. There was a question about Supervisor One for Ed Services and what are these job positions and locations for these two employees. And we did get a response. It said that Assistant Director Dr. Holloway is located at Ed Services, and these two supervisor positions report to her and will be assigned to Ed Services to be located at the district office and or Parkview USA Training Facility Casa Loma Recovery Center. So my question is, how many managers are needed for Parkview, USI, and the Casa Loma Recovery Center that we haven't even approved or started?
None except these.
Okay. Because I keep wondering where the budget is for USI, and you keep saying it's a program at Parkview and part of their budget, yet Dr. Holloway is assigned to Ed Services, and so are these supervisors. So where is the budget for this?
So this is part of staffing, just like every other site? And like I've said several times before, we haven't come out and shared budgets for every school site. We'd be happy to do that. We'd need a study session to do that. But just because you're not in favor of this program doesn't mean we're going to treat it differently than every other program we have in the district. And your questions consistently are about the Computer Science School and USI, both programs that not only are parents excited about in bringing kids back to the district, but your, your, your questions are directly resulting in potential negative impact to kids. And so I don't, I'm not in favor of going and doing extra steps just because you're not comfortable with these programs. And so there are two supervisors to serve hundreds of kids now that have enrolled in USI, that are enrolled in Parkview, and Dr. Holloway will oversee them. They will be located at Ed Services Department and also deployed as supervisors to Parkview and to the USI Training Facility or the Recovery Center. Just as stated. The other thing you asked was, I didn't know, you asked, where, where is, what's going on at, at the Orange County Computer Science School, and why are we moving things in there? And we've already disclosed that, that that is the location of the Training Facility, and the Recovery Center will be on Casa Loma.
Okay. I keep asking for a budget for USI, and I think the public wants a budget for USI. I keep getting asked that, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request. And, you know, saying that it's part of Parkview and then switching it because now it's part of Ed Services, I think that this is important. And I just want to review the management for USI, what we have approved in the last couple months. We have a principal. We have an assistant director. We have now two supervisors. We have Recode Fitness that has two managers, a senior trainer, and a program director. We also have the Training Lab, which is doing training for our employees. We have adaptive PE with a head and lead instructor. So right now, we have eight supervisors, and I don't even know how many employees we have at USI because we, I can't get that information. And I just am asking for this information. I think it's, the public should know this information. I think we want to be transparent, and that's all I'm asking for. So, you know, I'm just saying I'm not voting for this because we don't have this information yet. I don't see a budget. I'm not sure how many managers we have. I'm not sure how many people these managers are overseeing. I know that we have the five coaches from Recode, and I think there's two at adaptive PE, but I'm, I'm not sure about that. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put this puzzle together because of the lack of information.
Can I make a request that we get some sort of, like a matrix or a, I guess, matrix? Like who's where, at which facilities, who, I mean, down to the name, like if they're split places? Because it is, I mean, I can go on and look at coaches and things on USI, but I, it's, some of them might be at Yorblen High School or at another school, and it starts, it starts to blend altogether, which I know is sort of the model. But to, to be able to understand really what's happening, it's, it seems very confusing because everybody's going every which way. So if we had some sort of matrix that just kind of showed us?
Yeah, I can appreciate that. I think we'll have a lot more clarity. Again, we're, we're opening a brand-new program, so it's hard to, you know, to have everything lined up because we are enrolling kids right now, and we're trying to staff based on the kids. But yeah, absolutely, we'll put that together, and by the time the year starts, we'll know exactly what we're spending. And I can tell you, just looking at the staff we've hired, it's, it's going to cost a lot less than, than a school program would because a lot of the people we're hiring aren't teachers, who are, who cost a lot more money with benefits. So a lot of the consultants we're hiring and whatnot, we don't have to pay benefits on, or the part-time coaches.
So can you, when you're doing the matrix and putting that together, can you add some of that in there? Because they are going to be coaches, even though it's not necessarily what we're paying for, but like the staffing there, how many people are going to be there?
Yeah, again, I think in three to four weeks, we'll know a lot because we'll have, we'll be fully enrolled. We'll be able to provide much more clarity on this. But these two positions are absolutely necessary, given the hundreds of kids. And we do not have a principal for, for USI. We have Dr. Holloway, the principal's for Parkview. And she's already, she's always been at Parkview. We actually reduced a principal from the Virtual Academy, and, and Dominique is now principal of two schools. So there's, there's some savings there. We've also reduced several teachers when we moved the Virtual Academy over to Parkview. So it's all part of the equation, is we're, we're saving money in different areas as well. But all in all, it's a net gain, given the amount of kids we have coming in, and we'd be happy to share that.
Do you know what number you are at for USI at this point?
Well, we have over a hundred and forty applicants, so we're going through the process of actually getting them released from their districts and whatnot. So we'll, again, we'll know more in probably two to three weeks.
Okay, I, I understand USI is not a school. You've made it very clear that it's a program, and it's part of Parkview. So that's why, and, you know, Dominique is on all the websites, and all of that information is, is very clear. So that's why she is part of a supervisor there.
Yes.
She's the principal of the school that the pathway is a part of.
Correct.
Yeah.
She's the principal of...
Just like at Esperanza, all the pathways are under the principal.
Absolutely. And, and now that you bring that up, I think it's important that if in consistent, in the spirit of consistency, if you're asking for this kind of budget and matrix, can we have that for all the programs?
Well, and that's, yes.
That would be, I mean, that would be great, so that we could see all the programs, all the matrix, that that would be consistent across the board because it is a pathway at one of our school locations.
Well, and as I mentioned before, we're losing two million a year on the Virtual Academy, and we don't have...
Which we will continue.
People coming and saying, we got to close it. Or we, so, you know, it's not all about making money, it's about supporting kids. And if we have the money, especially in a district where we're gaining more kids because we're offering innovative programs, maybe innovation labs cost a million dollars to put in, but if it's bringing in families and it's serving kids well, it's worth the investment, especially if we have the funds.
Okay. Let's, okay, let's call for a vote. Luke?
I abstain.
I don't know, this mic, is it, what is it, Dwight? When I speak, does it automatically turn on, or do I have to press the button every time?
No, you have to press the button. When it turns green.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries four to one. All right, and so we will go back to, was there anything else, just in case we lose Sean again, that, with deals with personnel? I just want to make sure people can have, start their job. Okay, let's go to twenty-one, twelve.
Sorry. Let's see, twenty-one, twelve. Make a motion, we adopt the revised class management salary schedule for the addition of the athletic director position.
Oh, sorry, second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Frazier.
I, I would like just more information on why we're adding a classified one, it has been certificated before.
So it's a comparable compensation level. Our current athletic director at that site does not have a certificated management credential yet, and so we are going to hire him as a classified manager, similar, again, similar compensation. And it is not uncommon for classified management to be athletic directors.
At the other high schools, we have, are those athletic directors classified or certificated?
At the other high schools, they're certificated, but it's not uncommon for school districts to have classified athletic directors.
I'm only asking because I, when this position was hired, there was, what I was told, there, he was working on a credential, and that would be done before this was occurring, and it's not. Is there a date on when, is that still in process? Or this will, will this make it irrelevant?
It'll make it irrelevant until, he's still going through that process.
I would say he's still working through it, but...
That there's a chance by the end of the year, we would come back with a, with it being certificated again.
So if he got a certificated, it would actually, it would switch just by nature of it?
It would be our preference to do that, so we have them all on the same schedule.
Okay.
What are our current certificated athletic directors? What's their current classification?
It'd be Certified Management Athletic Director.
And the pay is the same?
Yes. It's comparable to, the dollars aren't exactly to the dollar the same. So what we're doing is, at the next meeting, we will bring this employee for classified management the exact step and call for the board. The first step is to approve this schedule.
So you have to make the schedule before you can approve that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, call for a vote. Luke?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck? Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we have, anything else? Any other personnel? Twenty-one, let's do twenty-one point seven.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve twenty-one point seven retainer agreement with Fagan-Friedman and Full Frost LLP.
I need a second, guys.
Oh, sorry, I'll second.
So the reason I brought this up is because this is the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the, the law firm that gives us advice on facilities and, where is that, Tal Rosini? That's Tal Rosini? Okay, then I don't want to make any, then we'll just go ahead and approve. That's, I don't need to make any comments, because I pulled that one, too.
Okay, I have a question about this one. A second, just taking notes. In the memo, it says that the law firm deals with current layoffs and future layoff processes, and I asked about that, and the answer I got was there was no layoffs planned, but we use them for our labor attorney on various matters. Can you give more detail?
Investigations, employee, employment matters, claims, whatnot. Personnel, so HR uses them for personnel matters.
Yeah, that could mean a lot of difference.
Okay, I just wanted, if we weren't using them for layoffs, as the memo states, I wanted to find out what we were using them for.
Well, we, we hope we're not using them for layoffs.
I hope so, too. That's why it brought my attention to it.
All right, call for a vote. Luke?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries six zero. We're going backwards. Okay. Let's just keep going backwards. Nineteen point two.
Nineteen seventeen.
Okay, so I was right, yeah. I wrote, someone's down on one side and someone down the other. So nineteen point seventeen. I think this is Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the subscription agreement with home campus for Parkview Schools, Universal Sports Institute, for those, all students and coach athletic clearances documents during the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Sorry.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Frazier.
Okay, I pulled this because I had a question. Is Parkview having their own sports teams?
Nineteen point one seven. So I would imagine when I saw this, the home campus, we just started that with all of the athletic programs because I had to sign up my son, and I will say that this was great because normally, you have to sign them up for summer camp, you know, the summer program. Then you have to sign them up again for like, you know, the spring, the fall, whatever. And so I was actually, like, when I was registering, I missed, I thought I had missed a step because for years and years and years, I was constantly enrolling in sports programs. And so the home campus, actually, you just do it once, and then you're clear for the whole year. And it was a freaking godsend. And so I would imagine that with this home campus, if they're enrolling through Parkview, that they're probably signing up for their homeschool. So like, if they're in the Parkview program, but they're going through USI, they're, they're just signing up for like Esperanza, Eldorado, Valencia.
I think it, it looks like there, it's for waivers and whatnot, seven hundred dollars.
You also upload your physicals, and if they're part of the USI, you've got to have...
You have your insurance card, you upload all that.
If they're going through the comprehensive high schools for the sports, do they need to, do we have to have this extra expense?
Because they are going to have to do it at their school. So that's where I'm trying, I'm like, it seems like...
This is a, this is so that we can...
This is a, this is so that we can have their athletic clearance on file for liability purposes, so in working with risk management, we want to make sure that all student athletes are cleared to participate in athletic training through USI. So it's not just for sports teams, but just making sure we have all their insurance forms and everything on file.
For kids, for kids to participate in training.
May not spec- may not be.
Exactly.
So the ice skater or the.
Okay.
MMA fighter, I don't know.
Who's disciplining that kid?
Okay, just, just checking because I was like, making sure it wasn't redundant, yeah.
Thank you.
I will say that this was like very nice and we, all the parents were confused, why are we not having to do another step for the signups, this was really good. All right, move for a vote, Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero, we'll go to nineteen point sixteen. Any motion please?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU with the Orange County Superintendent of Schools to participate in the Orange County Department of Education Career Technical Education Prudential Program during the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and I have a second by Mr. Frazier.
Okay, I pulled this, um, because on the memo, it says there's no fiscal impact, but in, um, the contract, it's very clear that there is a fiscal impact and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear with everybody. And, um, just to reiterate where, um, the funds would be coming from. Et cetera, so, um, it says that a teacher that goes through the CTE programming, um, there's a, a three thousand, three hundred dollar fee and if they have, they're going for additional, um, classes, it's fifteen hundred dollars. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that we are clear because we are expanding CTE, there's new programs going on. So there should be some fiscal, um, impact.
Sure, and we clarified in the board meeting, question and answer follow up, that we haven't had any teachers participate in years. However, should any do, we would be using CTE incentive grant funds, so absolutely, there would be an impact if anyone elects to and we'll be using CTE funds for that.
Okay, thank you for putting that on the record.
Of course.
That makes sense.
All right, move for a vote. Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I myself am an aye. Motion carries six zero, looks like we're going to nineteen point two.
Nineteen point two. Okay, uh, I pulled this one because it's a board policy and I just feel that because it's a board policy, we should pull it and and discuss it and share it if we have any discussion. Um, this is, uh, I make a motion that we approve revisions to board policy four one, six one four one point five. Independent study is required by Senate Bill one five three.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and I have a second by Mr. Frazier.
My question is just, can you give us, um, a brief overview on what is changing?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, so to summarize what happened because of the Senate bill, I mean, it eliminates the requirement for students to participate in a minimum of three consecutive school days before earning ADA, and so average daily attendance in independent study. It also changed the amount of time that a student can be in short term independent study for, from fourteen days to now fifteen days. So we can get a full three weeks of a student in short term independent study. It also says that we can collect written agreements at any time during the school year in which students participate in short term independent study. And then that the daily time value spent by people engaged in asynchronous instruction, regardless of whether they per, um, produce work, um, can count towards their participation and we just need to maintain documentation of that.
So it's much more flexible and conducive to what our students need and we still are able to capture ADA.
Yes.
Awesome.
That's a very good thing.
Appreciate the explanation.
Move for a vote? Now, okay, I'm calling you Luke, would you prefer Mr. Gilstrap or Luke?
Just do Luke.
Okay, Luke, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero, next one should be nineteen point one.
I pulled for the same reason, just because it's a resolution and, um, this one occurs every year.
You want to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I will make a motion first. Uh, make a motion, we approve resolution twenty four point zero one, Constitution Day Education Program for K twelve, honor around September eleventh, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and I have a second by Mrs. Anderson.
So I, um, again, just bringing this up because this is something that we do every year and our, our students and our schools all participate in Constitution Day at a, in a variety of ways. Um, and because it's a resolution, I just wanted to, um, call it out and make sure that the community is aware.
Very good, move for a vote, Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I myself am an aye, motion carries six to zero. We will move to eighteen point one six.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve funding for year two of the agreement with Legal Services for Tal Rosini APC effective July one, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Anderson.
So my question is, um, the original contract was, um, not these same dates, so it was in November to, to June. Um, and then this one is starting six months early. And so I'm curious as to, and if you'll explain the, what the spending is in each of those years and if this is consistent with the other two.
I don't have the numbers for what we spent, the reason that we changed the dates is because we started so at the odd time, like you pointed out, they started in, in December, went through, uh, November, so we wanted to make sure it aligns with our fiscal year, which is why we wanted to do July to June. Tal Rosini is what we use for facilities, we're, we're using them for lift slab things that are, that we're looking into at Valencia and a variety of other topics.
The what slab?
It's a, it's a building, uh, um, structural engineer kind of things that we're working with at different sites, so, um, need their support on that.
Very specific, do we have any other attorneys that we work with that work in construction?
Um, I mean, at times we've, we've used OHH for, for different, um, for things at, at, uh, middle schools and things like that. But, but Tal Rosini specifically is for construction, also for, uh, for, um, property use, that kind of thing, so.
Isn't OHH and, um, Tal, they're basically the competitors over, um, construction, they both do the same type of thing.
Mo- most law firms have somebody in construction and so it, you, you use who has specialization in that specific area that you need, yeah.
OHH is specialized in construction, that's how they started.
So is there any reason would, that we would consider using OHH instead, just because we had DSA issues where we were told we didn't have to call DSA and we did, and is this related to the Tal Rosini?
No. It's, uh, he's, Tal, Terry Tal's one of the best land use attorneys out there, so we'd recommend using him.
Okay. All right.
All right, move for a vote, Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero. So that'll be eighteen point one five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to ratify the Architectural Services Agreement for Architectural Design Services for District Property Located at four nine nine Casteloma Avenue, Yorba Linda with Studio Plus Architecture Corp. effective June nineteen through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Second.
Took me a while to hit the button.
You're lucky I heard you. Um, all right. I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and I have a second by Mrs. Buck, three times.
Um, two questions, one, um, do we see the construction there lasting a year and a half? Because it, it starts in June, we're like ratifying it and then it goes through December thirty first of next year.
It, it very well could, so what happens when we're, when we go through a project like this to submit to DSA, you have to have all the plans and architectural drawings done and then you have to figure out how to, how to get it done, right? And since we'll have that facility potentially occupied, uh, it, it could delay it for a good year and a half.
We have talked to DSA about trying to fast track it, um, because, uh, primarily the, the large, um, room, uh, we wouldn't be able to use it without sprinklers.
And I just wanted to say what I really appreciated about this, when I read it, is that it lists that these, they will facilitate all DSA required paperwork. And I'm hoping that we start seeing that on this, there seems to be a lot of things, um, that I've been missing with DSA and, um, I just want to make sure that we are appropriately using and that's why I really appreciated that. And that was the main reason why I pulled it, because if we're not getting DSA approval, um, we're liable, personally liable. So, um, I don't want any board member to be in that kind of position ever again. And, um, I just want to make sure that, and I just bringing that to the attention.
Well, it would have been, it would have been good if it was covered when Casteloma originally was transitioned, so yeah.
That put every one of us at risk since two thousand thirteen. Okay. Let's call for a vote, Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero, eighteen point ten.
If I could do ten and eleven together because they're both volleyball. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Architectural Services Agreement for Architectural Design Services for Construction of Three Beach Volleyball Courts at Esperanza High School with PPK Architects effective August fourteenth, twenty four through December twenty fifth. Additionally, the construction of Three Beach Volleyball Courts at Valencia High School with PPK Architects effective August fourteenth, twenty four through December thirty first, twenty five.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and I have a second by Mr. Frazier.
So I pulled this because, um, well, one, congratulations to, um, our, not winning team, but the fact that we have, um, an Eldorado graduate that was out there competing, that was fun to watch. Um, but my, and I love the fact that we're looking at beach volleyball. Um, there were a couple of questions that, um, people asked because we do have volleyball courts around the community and we do joint use in other places. Is there, um, any way that we could work with our cities and utilize their volleyball courts, build them up and save some cost on our end?
So actually, this is when, when they came to me and they were asking me about the beach volleyball and we started to look into this. Um, the Esperanza High School, um, beach volleyball team was driving twenty five minutes to the volleyball courts, the beach volleyball courts. And then the parents would have to stay there because it was in an area that the students did not feel comfortable and the parents did not feel comfortable like leaving their kids. And then when they went to play the games, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a volleyball parent, I think it was two or three hundred dollars an hour for them to rent for the, for the beach volleyball games, so. It, it is quite expensive and then we're traveling very far for all the practices.
It, yeah, and we want them to be safe, there's, um, courts at Jessamyn West, um, for example, right in the middle of town. Um, I don't know how many there are there, there's one, um.
Most courts have three, like when they're building the three. So if you only have one.
I play, Jessamyn Park is my, I mean, I love Jessamyn Park, I love that place, I play there all the time, so, I'm a beach volleyballer at heart, so.
Right, but normally you have three courts, right, so then it's, so you can't, to, to just use one court for like all the teams in our whole district, we wouldn't be able, they, there would be just, it would be insane for the practice schedules.
Adding on two additional ones would still be a significant cost, so if we're going to do that, we may as well do the three at the one site.
And it would be city, like, that would be a weird joint use.
Well, we've done joint use before for other things, for fields and stuff, but.
If I, I would say if they had like six court, if they had six and like you could get, you know, two teams from the high schools on at once, we should look at it, but just one, that would be awful for scheduling purposes.
What we were told, well, first of all, Luke, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm assuming that the Eldorado and YL beach volleyball teams would use the, the courts in other schools, yes.
Yeah, so the plan is for, um, YL kids to go to Esperanza and, um, Eldorado kids to go to, um, Valencia. Um, the three is so they can have competitions. And so, uh, we met with, um, Misty May, who's very interested in, in, she lives, well, I won't say where she lives, but she's a community member who's very interested in, um, in helping promote the program and, and, and her, some of her colleagues, uh, think there'll be a lot of community demand for it. Um, basically, it's going to be, people are going to be, want to be on it all the time. Valencia is the only school right now that we don't have a beach volleyball team and much of that's because we don't have a facility for them. Um, and so putting it there allows them to get a team as well.
And then hosting tournaments too, that's one of the things with, with basketball that we've utilized that makes a big difference fundraising wise is hosting tournaments and if we have home courts at the schools, like, that's a huge deal with three courts, so.
Yeah, especially if now they're already driving twenty five miles, that means other districts might move this way.
They might actually use ours and we get money.
All right, well, I'm excited about beach volleyball. What about surfing and, uh, speedboarding?
Let's go, let's go, all right.
Those were some crazy new sports, or breakdancing.
Board members first.
Uh, the one breakdancer, I kind of felt like I maybe could have done a little better.
Australia?
She's gotten so hammered.
I know, we're on recording, I'm sorry, apologize. Okay, so shall we move for a vote? All right, Luke, I, how are you gonna vote?
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero. Okay, so.
Okay, the next one's me too, nineteen nine. Uh, approve the Consultant Services Agreement for those Consultant Engineering and Architectural Services for the Freezer, Coral, Storage, Renovation of the Nutrition Services Center for, with Optimum Energy Design effective August fourteenth, twenty four through December thirty one, twenty twenty five.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and I have a second by Mr. Frazier.
I brought this up because I had questions from the community asking if this is the kitchen at Valencia and I told them it's not. Um, but if you'll let them know what this is all about.
Be happy to, so as you know, we're trying to really revitalize our nutrition services program with scratch cooking and, and doing a lot of neat things. Uh, what this is, is at our Nutrition Services Center, which is, um, right next to four nine nine, actually, it's the same address, four nine nine Casteloma, but the building right next door, um, we're, what we're proposing is to, to basically use state funds to build a drive-in freezer and a drive-in refrigerator so that we can do packing, more packing, uh, there, so we're not relying so much on Eldorado and other sites to do that packing. And so it allows us to be more efficient in delivering the food to, to sites and capitalize, essentialized freezer and refrigeration unit.
Makes sense to me, are we still working on Valencia Kitchen?
Yes, we, we had somebody out there looking at options just recently.
Okay, so Ken, now that you talked about that, we can clarify, we're still moving forward with the kitchen because the rumor this last week was that the kitchen was on the back burner, wasn't happening. But we are still working towards that.
We are, yeah, we, we want to make sure we're doing it in the most economical way for Valencia and also respecting the campus, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting layout.
To be.
Yes, yeah, we don't want to disrupt the, the, the operations on that campus.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving forward with the kitchen. Now with the vote. Luke.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries six zero. And I believe we go back to eighteen point eight, I think that's you, Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, ratify the Professional Services Agreement for Security Patrol Services with Orange County Public Safety effective July first through June thirtieth.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Frazier.
Okay, in the memo, um, it lists that, um, building all of our new pre- preschools and so we're having security there. And then it also uses, um, the Orange County, um, School of Computer Science and I just wanted to know what construction is taking place over there.
Yeah, as I mentioned in the memo, there's no construction, we're doing roofing at the site, we're moving a lot of equipment in. Um, we're doing some flooring, just like other sites, some painting, signage and whatnot.
So you mentioned flooring, um, in the exemption policy, is it same flooring or is it new flooring for USI? Are we doing mats, I mean, what, when you say flooring, what kind of flooring is going in over there?
Um, similar to other sites, pulling out carpet, resurfacing.
And did we get DSA approval on that?
I don't believe we need it. I don't believe we need it.
Cause on the exemption thing, it's if we're just replacing for the same, we don't need DSA, but if we're doing something different, then we need DSA. So I'm just asking that we look into that.
Well, we, we're not doing anything different than we're doing at all of our sites. And so.
Well, then maybe, I, I just saying that if we're not doing something different than the other sites and you're saying we're replacing it with something different, then we need to look into that.
It's very common to rip out carpet and polish flooring and, and, and you don't need DSA approval for that. Now, in addition, laying down rubber mats isn't changing anything. So that's all we've done.
Because they're just mats, they're not a.
They're not attached or anything.
They're not attached.
Nope.
I just would like us to double check. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's move for a vote. Luke?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries six, zero. And I believe our last one will be eighteen point three. Is it, oh, no, we did eighteen point two first.
You already did that one.
Okay, accept, I'll make a motion to accept as completed the projects listed on the authorized filing notice of completion.
Can I get a second?
Oh, a second, sorry. I'm just reading.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Miss, Mrs. Buck.
Okay, um, I asked to provide the memo and the date of the meeting where we approved the sage, shade structure for Esperanza wrestling program. And, cause I said, I'm sorry, I don't remember approving this. And the response I got was the sage structure was purchased under CMSA contract and it has been previously approved for the board. I was wondering when that happened.
I thought it was November twenty-three when they did the baseball bleachers at Esperanza. That was the answer in the memo. And I remembered that. I thought it was November twenty-three, it said.
November fourteenth of twenty twenty-three?
That's what I thought it said.
Yes, that's, that's the board meeting that that.
Okay.
Purchase.
Thank you.
All right.
I misread that.
Move for a vote, please, Luke?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries six, zero. Okay, and now we will move on to our communications and board reports. Yeah, we did the full consent before. Thank you. Mrs. Buck, you want to start us off?
Sure. So I just have a few things to, to report on. I had the opportunity to go to the Avid Summer Conference and Training and spend a few hours there just learning about, more about Avid and the strategies and how it can benefit and our students and how different job descriptions and different management levels can bring Avid strategies into different areas within schools to impact students. So it was great to go. I've got to see a number of you there as well. And I, I, we spoke to, and I left my notes at home. I wrote down his, the CEO's name. But he came toward the end and was talking about his experience as a, a young man and in school and it was, he, he struggled and school wasn't great for him. And he is incredibly successful now and really focuses on Avid because those strategies really make a difference in the lives of kids. So it was nice to meet him and to, to attend that. Second, I'll just bring up was the symposium. We've talked about that a little bit. And hearing from Brandon Fleming, who was also at CSBA and got to come and, and talk to us. He wrote a book called Miseducated. And again, it talks about just the struggles that students have and it's important to meet them where they are and, and know what their full experience is and how that impacts them in education and how we can lean in and be that one person that makes the difference for those students. So I'm charging all of you teachers out there to find that one student, as he told us that day. And that we're focusing on in the district this year is, is find one that you can be that advocate for, that, that one adult that is there for them. And then last, I attended the new teacher orientation this week. As mentioned, we have over third, or ninety-three new teachers. It was nice to see all of them there and hear where they're coming from, whether it's other districts or it's their first time in education and new, and maybe new to PYL. But it was really nice to see all of them there. I was surprised that Orange County School of Computer Science has twenty-one new teachers. It was really remarkable to see everybody there. So thank you for the invite and being able to be there for that welcome. That's all I have.
Okay, first, I wanted to congratulate Leila Armand. She attends Valencia High School and she was one of four students in Orange County that were recognized by the Bank of America Annual Student Leadership Program. And she participated in summer internship work at the CEO Leadership Alliance of Orange County and the Second Harvest Food Bank. And she is an amazing student. And she's the president of her Black Student Union and plays on varsity basketball team. And she volunteers with Black Girls Code and Girl Up STEM, which are two organizations dedicated to promoting diversity in STEM fields. And she aims to pursue a degree in computer science in order to help unpack new technologies such as AI. And I actually saw Girl Up STEM at work. And they're an amazing club at Valencia. And reaching out to the elementary schools and helping to promote STEM. Also, I, I also wanted to add my gratitude for everyone that helped with the summer enrichment and the summer camps. We served so many students this summer. And I just thank you so much for working so hard over your summer. And I know that it's a huge team that makes this happen. And I'm just so grateful for everybody. And then lastly, I'd like to congratulate the Rio Vista PTA for their recognition as a national PTA School of Excellence. And I want to thank the Rio Vista PTA for all their hard work and advocacy for the students at Rio Vista. And your, your leadership and hard work has really paid off. And, and lastly, just a warm welcome back to all of our staff and our students that are going to be coming back into our schools in the next two weeks. And I'm really excited about the upcoming school year.
Mr. Youngblood?
All right, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make this quick. I want to welcome everybody back. I know this is going to be an exciting new year. Looking forward to seeing how all of our kids perform. I'm looking forward to seeing how all our new staff gets, gets accustomed and integrated into all these amazing programs. I would like to thank the, the, the team that Dr. Chernus has put together to kind of help not only fund these types of programs, but just the creativity and innovation in which he's used to, to kind of make us a, an amazing district to go to. We've got so many teachers and so many students that are willing to come back. And this is actually a direction that we should be continuing. I think other districts around us are, are very envious of our success. And I would not be surprised if more copying of our programs are going to be placed on their agendas as well. So thank you again. And thank, and thank you, Dr. Chernus. Just tell all your team, they're doing an amazing job. And I can't wait to see what actually comes of it. Other than that, I look forward to going around to some of the, the schools, seeing these new classes, get start, to get started up. And, and that should, should do it for my board report. Thank you again.
All right, well, I think I'm just going to continue the theme of being excited for what's coming. Was able to attend the symposium. And we go and do the wave, y'all. We go and do the wave.
We are, yes, we are.
And I think one of the things about that, that event that's so neat is that a lot of those people don't do the wave together. And by that, I mean, we are all moving in the same direction, right? This is a place where we want to reach students. We want the best outcomes for each and every one of them. And that looks different for everyone. And I just want to come into this year excited for all the new programs. But it's not just about new programs. It's about existing programs. It's about our existing staff, teachers. Everybody that's involved in each one of these students' lives is so influential and can really make an impact. And I'm excited to see what comes of all this this year. I'm also really excited. I got super Hox Ness vibes when Luke's crew was here to bring. That's the first, I think that's the first time we've ever had like a cheering section for a board member. That was pretty good, but I just. Oh, yeah. No, and, and like, I'm also excited because fall sports is my favorite season for sporting events and football coming and Hox Ness and all that stuff. And just, it's, it's, I feel like it's going to be a really exciting special year. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. And so I saw Victoria Castro earlier. Did she leave? I was hoping she just stepped out to go to the bathroom. So she was here earlier and so she was the person who wrote the one point, who got us the grant. She wrote the grant for one point one million for the preschools. And so I was really hoping that she would stick around so we could acknowledge her. She did a fantastic job and I was able to talk to her about, at the leadership symposium. And she's very passionate and apparently she loves to write grants to get more money. So we need more Victorias running around here. Huh, Gary? So thank you, thank you, Victoria, for, for your hard work. And she seems very motivated to find more, so that's awesome. I attended the Orange County School of Computer Science Family and Friends Night, where they opened up the school, you know, to the family and friends of the teachers and the students. And so they were able to kind of get another sneak peek. And everybody seemed very excited and got to know each other. And the teachers were able to, you know, show the kids the equipment and what was going to be expected and what a day is going to look like in that program. And so that was, that was a really fun event. I also went to the leadership symposium, which was so fun. And the message was great. And it was almost one of those things where I don't know what the rating will be because I know the schools have, you know, rating, you know. Can't, what, what, you have to get permission if it's PG thirteen or something. But this would be something cool that if we could ever like stream it for like our students. Like his message is so, like, it's just so inspirational and just amazing. We know where he started and the trials that he had on, you know, along the way. So yeah, so I'm excited for that. So when his book, you know, I think the book's out, but when the movie comes out, I think everybody needs to watch it. It was just, it was just a great experience. I also went to the new teacher orientation where we've met the ninety-three teachers. And I thought what was really cool was, thank you, Dr. Gates, for your hard work on the multi-year contracts because we're finding that we're getting a lot of teachers from other districts who've been wanting to come in here. And so since we honor the years of service, I think somebody came over with like twenty-five or twenty-six years and they're starting in our district. And they're very, very excited to be here. And then just the last thing I was touching on. I was talking about the equestrian program because we've had a lot of parents and a lot of these kids that do equestrian. They do, they're part of the pony club. There's a lot of rodeo. We have barrel racers. We have all kinds of stuff going on. So I did sit down and I met with, I would say there was probably maybe eight or ten people from the community. And there was some of the students in our district as well. And so we just kind of talked about like, what could the program look like? Obviously, there was people from 4H, from FFA. And they came along too because they said, have you guys ever thought about an FFA and/or 4H program? And apparently there's a lot of grant money in that as well and it can carry over to equestrian. So the night was kind of one of those things where we were just shooting ideas around. Like what could it look like? You know, because obviously in equestrian, there's a lot of opportunities for therapeutics, for special education. And so it was kind of just a night of like brainstorming, just seeing what's out there and what the possibilities are. But I do think that one thing that we could probably move on now is across the country, equestrian, like people who are rodeo riders or, or do equestrian, they're doing it as a sport and they are getting a letter from their district, you know, for their particular school. And so that does seem something, like something that we could facilitate very easily so we can recognize our athletes. So that would be one ask that I have is that maybe we can, can do that quickly. Cause obviously in equestrian program, it would take a lot of time. But it was a positive meeting because people said, you know, if we could start very small, you know, with like, because obviously we're a horse community. And then, you know, maybe build from there. And so I thought it was just a good meeting. Our community was very supportive and just very excited that we could even have these type of opportunities. And they're excited to build on this. And so that is, that's all I have. Really excited to, to see everybody go back to school. I'm like Todd. I found a fall, like, you know, it said football and, you know, it's hard for me to put, put out football and not be able to put out water polo. You know, I can't find any signs to say like water polo is like the best fall sport ever because he does, says it doesn't exist.